Let's call the city twenty-three at six P M. And can I get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted Friday, April twenty-eighth at Milton City Hall, Milton Paley Wiggly and Hometown Ace Hardware.
Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Alright, we have an agenda. Pledge of allegiance. Who would like to volunteer? Okay, Charlotte. Okay, uh, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So you can choose to speak now, if you want to speak at all, or you can choose to speak when your item comes up on the agenda, if you're planning on speaking. And first and last name, address, and the agenda item you're speaking on.
Uh, my name is Sari Trumberger, and this is Robert Hamm. And we're at two oh four South John Paul Road in Milton. And, uh, we are talking about the raising quail. And, um, yeah, so I wanted to say how excited we are about, um, this ordinance being, I guess amended. Um, and, um, we, I specifically wanted to, um, ask, um, about one of the, uh, permit requirements. And it is in section six dash two oh three, um, ex- um, number or letter D, where it says chickens and quails shall be provided by a sanitary and adequately sized covered enclosure or coop and shall be kept in the covered enclosure or in a sanitary and adequately sized and accessible fenced enclosure at all times. Chicken or quail coops and related enclosures shall be constructed in a workman-like manner, be moisture resistant and either raised off the ground or placed on a hard surface such as concrete patio blocks or gravel. Chicken or quail coops and enclosures shall be constructed and maintained and reasonably prevent the collection of standing water. When considered together, chicken coops and enclosures shall be large enough to provide at least sixteen square feet of space per chicken. Coops or enclosures for quail should be large enough to provide at least four square feet of space per quail. Um, I guess my question was, is that like the actual structure of cage? Or is that, um, a fenced-in area? Um, I wasn't sure.
So you're asking for like kind of interpretation of that?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, is our attorney able to interpret that?
I think, Mark, actually, I can take this one with that. What the ordinance tonight that is on the agenda, we discussed a minimum of four feet of space per bird. So with that, it's the sixty-four square feet for the maximum of the sixteen quail per parcel. So that is the portion of all, of all of it. It's together is a minimum of four square feet. Per bird with the max of sixteen. So does that, so that includes like a land plot kind of fenced-in area? Because I guess what we were thinking, um, was just to have, you know, the cage. And, uh, the, the cages that we were, um, looking, I have a pla- like a, just a simple plan of what we were kind of thinking of. And, um, each caged in area and two stacked on top of each other were only seven point four square feet. And I didn't know if that's what this meant as just that in caged area. I can only have, um, four squeep per bird in that cage. Or if that meant within a fenced-in area with ground space plus the cages. Um, because they, they wouldn't be like a free roaming, kind of like chicken, how kind of chickens free range. Um, that's not, you know, what we were thinking. We were just having the, the cage. And then, um, with the research that I was looking at, um, that the, uh, the required space is at least one square foot per bird. So that's why I was just kind of like, I don't know what it actually meant. If we.
And where would, um, I mean, there are other measurements and very, in different ordinances. So where were you getting your recommendation for?
Um, I had found, um, a few different, uh, websites with articles about, you know, how much space do quails need from one website? Um, another one was just, you know, what you should know about raising quail, and it goes into a lot of detail. And all of them kind of say that they need at least one square foot. Um, and if I was going to go with the, um, caged plans that, you know, we had looked up, you know, you can buy the plans and, you know, make it yourself. Um, that would only allow two birds per cage. And then, I mean, to get, you know, like the ten or twelve that we were thinking, that would be a lot of cages. So that's why I was just kind of like, does this mean the cage per se, or does this mean a range? The area around it?
The way, the way I read it sounds as if it's, take the number of birds and multiply it by four, and there's got to be that much room, and it includes the cage and any of the area around as well. I, I, that, that's what I get from, uh, what I thought in terms of, um, uh, let's see. When considered together, um, the coops and enclosures shall be large enough to provide at least, um, so it's the enclosure being the open space.
Okay.
That, that's the way I read it. I, no, I don't know whether.
When staff was producing that, yes, that is what was understood was that it was four square feet. So that's coop and or enclosure.
Okay.
Four square feet. So that is what's on the agenda tonight that staff put together. Um, so that can be modified at that point. The ordinance can be modified from what's here, but that's what we are presenting to council at this point.
So if it was the maximum of, of, uh, what was the maximum numbers?
Sixteen birds.
So sixteen, that comes out sixty-four, which would be an eight by eight space that would include both the coops and the open space.
Okay, yep, that clears it all up then. Um, I was just, wasn't sure if you just meant by cage and we can only have, you know, then that would mean we could only have two birds, and that's a lot of cages, more than I was wanting to have. Um, so yeah, no, if, if that's, you know, four square feet per bird in an enclosure, that is totally doable, right?
Yep.
Yep, that's all, uh, we were, uh, kind of concerned about. Other than that, everything else, you know, twenty-five feet from a residential structure, um, the, the no slaughter, that's understandable, the sixteen birds, that's more than we were asking for. So, yeah, other than that, no, I don't think we have any other questions, do you?
Well, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks. Okay, um, the meeting dedication. Um, the meeting tonight is going to be dedicated to all of the employees that work for the city of Milton. Since it is, uh, Public Employee Recognition Month, and there's other categories within that that other people don't want us to talk about, but look at our star employees on the co- yet again, like we had D P W employees, we've had police officers, we've had, um, city hall staff, so we have quite a run of magazine covers. And that's really kind of exciting that we're doing good things and the League of Wisconsin Municipalities recognizes the innovation and the quality staff that we have working for us. So now that I'm in my like fifth turn for mayor, I've decided to delegate proclamations. Yes, not as frequently as I could have. So, um, you all have a proclamation in front of you, and I totally do appreciate all of your involvement. And I don't know, I really can't remember who has what at this point, but, um, whoever has Community Action Month, go for it.
Okay, so Community Action Month. Whereas, community action has made essential contributions to individuals and families across the nation by creating economic opportunities and strengthening communities. And whereas, community action is a robust state and local force connecting people to life-changing services and creating pathways to prosperity in ninety-nine percent of all American counties. And whereas, community action builds and promotes economic stability as an essential aspect of enabling and enhancing stronger communities and stable homes. And whereas, community action promotes community-wide solutions to challenges throughout our cities, suburbs, and rural areas. And whereas, community action delivers innovative services and supports that create opportunities for families and children to succeed. And whereas, community action insists on community participation and involvement, ensuring that all sectors of the community have a voice and will be heard. And whereas, community action is celebrating fifty-eight years of innovation, impact, and providing proven results for Americans. Now therefore, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as Community Action Month in recognition of the hard work and dedication of all city of Milton community action agencies.
Thank you, and I do proclaim that, and I just signed it. So Natural Historic Preservation Month, I wonder who was saying this one?
National Historic Preservation Month. Whereas, historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability and whereas, historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas, it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as is, as a people. And whereas, the city has planned a gravestone preservation workshop at Milton East Cemetery on May twenty-seventh, beginning at one P M, to ensure the preservation of the permanent markers for those that come before us. And whereas, the city of Milton's history focus, uh, features not only fascinating stories of local interest, but also national interest through the Milton House and its rural underground railroad. And whereas, the city of Milton has shown a commitment to historic preservation by working with property owners to designate on the National Register of Historic Places sixteen individual properties and three historic districts, including the Milton College History Historic District, Merchant Row Historic District, and Parfue Historic District. And by locally designating two historic districts and five individual properties. Now therefore, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, does hereby proclaim May twenty-twenty-three as National Historic Preservation Month in the City of Milton, and call upon the people of Milton to join their fellow citizens across the United States in recognizing and participating in these special observances by researching Milton's diverse history or reviewing the community's many historic structures, including the Milton House Museum and the main hall of the former Milton College Campus.
Thank you. Mental Health Awareness Month.
Mental Health Awareness, May twenty-twenty-three. Whereas, mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being. And whereas, mental illnesses are real and prevalent in our nation, nation, and half of us will have a mental health diagnosis at some point in our lives. And whereas, all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives and should feel comfortable in seeking help and support to manage these times. And whereas, engaging in prevention, early identification, and early intervention are as effective ways to reduce the burden of mental illness as they are to reduce the burden of other chronic conditions. And whereas, there is a strong body of research that identifies behavioral health risks and supports specific tools that all Americans can use to protect their mental health and well-being. And whereas, with effective treatment before stage four, all individuals with mental illnesses, even serious mental illnesses, can make progress towards recovery and lead full, productive lives. And whereas, each business, school, government, agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen has a responsibility to promote mental health and well-being for all. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim May as Mental Health Awareness Month. Further, I also call upon the citizens, government agencies, public and private institutions, businesses, and schools in the City of Milton to recommit our community to increasing awareness and understanding of mental health. The steps our citizens can take to protect their mental health and the need for appropriate and accessible services for all people with mental illnesses.
Thank you very much. National Nurse Appreciation Week.
National Nurse Appreciation Week, May sixth through twelfth, twenty-twenty-three. Whereas, National Nurses Week honors the con- the contributions and sacrifices of nurses and serves as a reminder to thank the medical professionals who keep individuals and communities healthy. Whereas, nurses are extraordinary individuals who display courage, care, dedication, and commitment in caring for others. Whereas, the American Public Health Association defines public health nursing as the practice of promoting and protecting the health of populations using knowledge from nursing, social, and public health science. And whereas, public nurse health work to promote wellness and help prevent disease and reduce health risks at population levels through evidence-based care and education. And whereas, the knowledge and skills of public health nurses enable them to make significant contributions to public health through a unique combination of clinical nursing background with knowledge from the public health and social services. Now therefore, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim May sixth through twelfth, twenty-three, a Nurses Appreciation Week as it is more important than ever to celebrate nurses across all fields for their unwavering care and dedication to their patients and community.
Thank you. Teachers Appreciation Week.
Whereas, what is best for our kids is what is best for our community, which means ensuring that every kid has access to a high-quality public education regardless of their socioeconomic status. And whereas, the City of Milton's educators make learning possible by fostering positive, supportive, and inclusive environments where students of all ages, backgrounds, identities, and abilities can reach their full potential. And whereas, while our students study math, science, social studies, and language arts, our community's educators make sure that they are also learning kindness, respect, empathy, compassion, and integrity. And whereas, our educators were tirelessly to open students' minds to new ideas, encourage them to think critically, inspire them to dream big, and teach them to be good people and good neighbors. And whereas, this week, the City of Milton reaffirms its commitment to fighting for meaningful investments in our kids, our educators, our schools, and joins all Wisconsinites in thanking educators throughout the state for essential work they do to support our students within the community each and every day. Now therefore, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, does hereby proclaim May eighth through twelfth, twenty-three, as Teacher Appreciation Week. A time to recognize those who are becoming tomorrow's teachers and to show gratitude to the many teachers whose commitment makes a difference in the lives of the children in the City of Milton schools.
Thank you very much. And last but not least, Public Service Recognition Week.
Public Service Recognition Week, May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three. Whereas, Americans are served every single day by public servants at the federal, state, county, and city levels. These unsung heroes do the work that keeps our nation working. Whereas, public employees take not only jobs, but oaths. And whereas, many public servants, including military personnel, police officers, firefighters, embassy employees, healthcare professionals, and others risk their lives each day in service to the people of the United States and around the world. And whereas, public servants include teachers, doctors, scientists, trained conductors, astronauts, nurses, safety inspectors, laborers, computer technicians, social workers, and countless other occupations. Day in and day out, they provide the diverse services demanded by the American people of their government with efficiency, integrity. And whereas, without these public servants at every level, continuity would be impossible in a democracy that regularly changes its leaders and elected officials. Now therefore, I, Anissa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim May seventh through the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three as Public Service Recognition Week. Further, I encourage all the community members to recognize the accomplishments and contributions of government employees at all levels, federal, state, county, and city. Signed this day, second day of May twenty-twenty-three.
Thank you very much. You guys did great work. I would not have a voice left if I had to read them all, and I think they all are equally important to be said out loud. Um, so we can fully appreciate the meaning behind all of those. Alright. Approval of a consent agenda.
So moved.
Nobody wants to pull anything off of this consent agenda? Bill Wilson knows what I'm talking about. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Nice work. I love your efficiency, council. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash five eleven. An ordinance amending chapter six, article seven of the Code of Ordinances to provide for the keeping of quail. So Jenny, did you want to say something?
We went over it a little bit, but the biggest portion of this is the requirements for the keeping of the quail where they're supposed to be kept in the coop and enclosure. So it's the minimum four feet space per bird, sixteen quail as a maximum. Uh, and how we came up with that is that's similar to what the chickens are, is that the max is sixty-four square, or minimum is sixty-four square feet. So all of the other requirements are the same as the requirements that for chickens. So if there was some, basically what happens is that we receive the request, and then the request then goes out to all of the budding and properties and diagonal from the property. And then we have fourteen days to have an objection. If we do not hear any objections, then it goes to, it, it's just approved. If there are any objections, then it comes to council to hear those objections.
And right now, we're just looking at the ordinance, though.
Yes, that, that's included in the ordinance that's proposed tonight.
Okay. Any questions or comments from anybody?
I was, I just had a question about the, um, section that was referenced. I, in the research that I did, I was under the impression that quails are interior, like stored in a barn or a shed or something. Is that how you guys are doing it, or are you planning on doing indoor and outdoor? Because, and, and the reason that I'm bringing it up is exactly what you pointed out with the one square foot. Uh, because I also had read that information too. Um, so could you just explain this, Mark D?
Well, I think.
Be Mark S?
Yes.
I'll assume it was me, alright. Well, as a, as, as, as was explained by Jenny, how the, um, staff came up with the number was they just wanted to make it the same size as for chickens, so that there is, um, it makes it easier to enforce that way, because then you're just looking at a standard maximum size for either chicken or quail. And then they determined, well, what would be the appropriate total number that could be within that footprint? And at least what's proposed is sixteen, and the comments earlier were that was more than what the persons who brought this to the attention of the council were looking to have anyway. And so, at least for them, I mean, you don't, obviously this applied to anybody, but that was, I think, the rationale for that is that the quail are smaller and there could be, um, basically four times as many quail as, as chickens for that footprint. Um, and, uh, so it's set up here to allow that the quail to be outside as opposed to just inside. Of course, you could have chickens just inside as well. And so the prior choice of the council was to have it. Either way, you could have inside and outside. It couldn't be in the house, obviously, but inside or outside. Um, but that's something that's within a discretion of the council. If you feel there's a better, better, um, maximum footprint, you can certainly change that. You, if you feel that there should be, it should be smaller or larger per quail, or the number of quail, that's really up to the council to decide tonight. This is just what has been proposed at this time, the reasons that Jenny said.
There isn't a mandee, though, that the quail have to live inside.
No.
Okay.
And then what about the roosters? Can, can you kind of explain that a little bit? Have we had any complaints from anybody that we have allowed chickens? Any neighbor complaints at all?
I'm not aware of any neighbor complaints about how, allowing chickens. And so currently, we have for chickens, we have eight permits that have been issued. We have two that are in the process in the, of the next couple of weeks. We're waiting for, if we receive any objections, we'll have a total of ten at that point, if we don't receive any objections. We also have not hit any violations that we're aware of.
Um, and then I also just want to point out the information that Larry had sent us. He had done a lot of research on this. Um, where he recommended that paragraph be added advising the residents to, to refer to the Center for Disease Control and the U S Department of Agriculture for science by, science-based advice on the proper sanitation precautions. Can we get that in there, or? Do we already have that we need to do that from having the chickens?
We did not have that in the ordinance that was proposed tonight, no.
Well, I, I have to agree with, with Larry's request. I think it's a good idea for us to encourage anybody that wants to do this to make sure to look at the C D C guidelines.
So how would we enforce that?
How do we enforce it now?
We don't have it in the ordinance now.
But, I mean, we have chickens. How do we enforce it? Do we have a problem with our chickens? How do we enforce that?
Instructions in here, if there are problems with chickens, sorry, instructions in here, if there are problems with chickens due to sickness and stuff like that, there's nothing requiring them to go see the C D C for information, stuff like that. So it's not, nothing there to enforce right now for chickens.
At the present, there's, there are public health requirements. That's in section six hyphen two zero five, which would apply equally to both quail and to chickens that, that requires them to be handled in a sanitary manner and prevent the spread of communicable diseases among birds or. That, that requires them to be handled in a sanitary manner and prevent the spread of communicable diseases among birds or to humans. And then if there are any unusual illness or death of chickens or quail, they must report it to the city and the Rock County Health Department. And which, and notes that the city or health department can order testing, quarantine, isolation, vaccination, or euthanasia if they're believed to carry communicable diseases. So what is missing, I guess, is referral to a specific source of information regarding this topic of, of handled in a sanitary manners to prevent the spread of the diseases. So you can certainly add that requirement, but, but it's still going. Even without that requirement, they're still required to reuse whatever information they have to comply with this section. So I think what, what you'd be adding there is just providing them with a source of information to, to help them comply. So you can either put that in here or just allow them to use whatever sources they have to comply. That's up to the council.
The only thing I was thinking of was like there, there may be other sources, right? There may be UW extension, there may be FFA or other, so I think you could say may, like, use various sources, for example, but I don't think we can say you could, it'd be hard to enforce, like, oh, you can only use this source for information. Does, am I making sense?
You could encourage as a policy for the city to make available sources of information along with an application.
So however you would like to amend the ordinance as it's presented then. That would be on you, Linda.
Nobody else has any questions?
I'm, do I have to state my name? Okay, so when I was doing the research before I presented it to you guys, I did a bunch of calling to see as far as the Department of Ag and the DNR and everything. And when there was a lot of, oh, you need to call this person, you need to call that person. So when I finally got ahold of somebody, Department of Ag for the, I think the Department of Health, they had stated that if I were to have any type of wild bird or chicken, any kind of backyard flock, the best thing to do was to register our premises as having such type of backyard flock in case of any, you know, disease outbreak. So if there was something in, you know, our area that was a bird disease or outbreak, that they would notify us. Because we, our premises is registered on this, you know, this roster of having, you know, wild birds or chickens, whatever. So, I mean, that's something that, you know, you can have on the permit application, that you have to have your residence registered or the premises registered through that department. I can look at my notes and try and figure out which one it was exactly. But, but no, that, that was something that I did have, you know, asked and she didn't let me know. That that was something that they would like us to do in case of a disease outbreak. So if you, if you want any of that info, I can find that out.
And I will actually add, that is already a requirement in the state of Wisconsin. Yes, it's actually, Wisconsin's the first state to mandate that if there is any livestock premise or on a premise, they have to register. So that's already mandated by the state, and so we do let people know that when they apply for the chickens at this point. Because it is something that's required at the state level. At our level, we just let them know that they need to comply with that state requirement.
Okay, cool. Thank you. Anything else for anyone? And how, did you, did you want to make some amendment, an amendment or something to the ordinance?
Well, what does everybody else think?
I'm, I'm thinking it can be covered in the application materials as opposed to putting it in the ordinance.
Yeah, seeing majority to include it.
That, that's kind of what I, I like that idea too.
Something that could be, could be an option is where we, for the application, we could put in the application their livestock premises registration number that they have to fill in. So they need to call, and I believe, I'm not, haven't been, done this for a long time, probably, but I believe they can do it over the phone within a roughly a fifteen-minute period, so that, that is an option if you would like to add that, have us add that to the application.
Does that need to be added in motion, or are you just going to add?
Mark, I don't think that needs to be in the motion for the ordinance.
No.
It's just a distraction for staff.
That is, you're just giving them, what the staff could put that in there, really, I think they have a discretion to put that on their own. So they're looking for support on that. I mean, that's fine. You can, you can do a motion to direct it to whatever you think is necessary.
I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and approve the first reading of the ordinance number nine, twenty twenty-three dash five eleven. Wait the second, third readings and adopt.
Second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone oppose? All right, we have an amended ordinance at quail keeping in the city. You oppose? I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I opposed it because I just feel like maybe we should do one or two readings and give the public a chance to react.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you. And thank you for giving us your thought process about that. So you're not opposed to, you're just opposed to the process? Interesting. Okay. We're still having quail keeping in the City of Milton. Discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand twenty-three dash eleven. Adopting the two thousand twenty-three Rock County Hazard Mitigation Plan, and our chief will fill us in.
So this is something that comes up periodically. That, as the memo indicates, this is a FEMA requirement, so that in order to receive grant funding for mitigation projects within our jurisdiction, we need to have an approved mitigation plan. Rock County is lucky enough to do this at a countywide level so that I don't have to create a mitigation plan every funding cycle. The Rock County plan has been approved by the county board, by Wisconsin Emergency Management, and by FEMA. And in order to be eligible for funds down the road, and if we were to need to apply for funds for mitigation projects, we also need to adopt the plan by resolution tonight. So I put this in front of you for a routine adoption. I don't have any mitigation projects needed in the City of Milton at this time. But if we ever do, having this on record will help get that process going.
And we've passed this in the past.
Yeah, the last time was twenty seventeen. I think that was the last time I brought it to you. And there was at least a couple before then as well.
I would move approval of the resolution twenty twenty-three eleven. Adopting the twenty twenty-three Rock County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Yeah, you got the only no over there, too. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Looking at you, Linda. Okay. That motion carries. Another really controversial item, discussion and possible action regarding the appointment of a City of Milton Weed Commissioner. That, this won't take effect until June. Mark, what is it? Mark L?
So the bill, the Code of Ordinances, require appointment of a weed commissioner. The appointment is required by a majority vote of the common council. We're recommending the same person as last year, Operations Crew Lead Paul Smith. So we're recommending the mayor appoints and the common council approves Paul Smith as the weed commissioner for the City of Milton for the period of May second, twenty twenty-three, to May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
And does Paul want this appointment? All right, we can pass on that. Okay, so the mayor will be assigning and appointing these duties to Paul Smith. Is there a motion from the council?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. General items, does anyone have any committee reports for all the committees meeting this week?
Historical preservation meets tomorrow.
Okay.
I do have a general item.
Go ahead. I'll just go.
Later this month is Civil Order Living Yesterday's, and looks like it's going to be a good time. One new change this year is, there's Twilight Tours is going to be during that weekend now instead of just being in the fall. So there'll be Twilight Tours on Saturday evening of Civil Order Living Yesterday's. Besides that, for the school day, we have twelve hundred kids coming from around southern half of Wisconsin. I think right now looking at as far away as near Hudson, near Stevens Point. And one oddball one that says they're from Ingris, Alaska. Still figuring that one out. But anyways, so we're drawing from all around, also some of the Chicago area as well.
Nice. And what's the dates again?
Nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-first. Nineteenth is the school day, which is invite only, and we're starting to close registration on that. Weekend portions free, except Twilight Tours, which has a cost to it, and a couple other things as well. There also may be a fun announcement coming out in a week or two about something else we're adding this year.
The suspense, the suspense, okay. Anybody else with a committee report? Teresa?
The Gathering Place, we have a goodbye party for Dave Fisher scheduled for May twenty-fifth at noon, if anybody's interested in coming, just contact Gathering Place. And they are interested, if you are available around noon on the twenty-fifth.
Is there a day attached to that, like Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
Thursday.
Okay.
Thursday, the twenty-fifth, to say goodbye.
I can do it.
And we have hired a new person to take over, and I can't think of the guy's name. But he, he really is a wonderful person, has terrific experience working with senior areas. He's coming down from, down by Eau Claire, and he's ready to roll.
Wow, he's relocating or is he commuting?
Yeah, you need to open up a room for him. No, really, he's moving his family down here, and I, I think it's going to be great.
What was the time on the event?
Noon.
Noon. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
And is May twenty-fifth our community recognition picnic, too? But it's in the evening, it's in the evening. I don't have to cook for lunch or dinner. As if I was going to.
What time?
Five thirty. And it's going to be perfect weather. Any other committee reports or announcements before we go to staff?
I just have a question. Will we be getting a fire report at all, or?
Aren't you attending the meetings?
I'm working on it.
Yeah, we can get, okay, so I cannot give you a report because I did not attend the last meeting. And our alternate did not attend either. So there was no, nothing major, but we will have a meeting next Thursday, and we will give a report. And obviously, anybody is welcome to come. They're open meetings. And then we can also get a date for when Chief Pickering can come and give us an update, although we meet with him every other week, too. So, yes. Anything else from anyone? Okay, that's a no. I don't know, you talked to your brothers there. Staff reports. Inga, can you go first?
We're continuing to work with Gov HR on the police chief recruitment, again. No change in, in his retirement date in November. So we're still working with Gov HR. The resume, cover letter, application packets are due May thirtieth. So we're anxiously awaiting that deadline so we can see what kind of applications we got in.
Thank you very much. And Ash, oh, chief, do you have something?
I was just going to say LinkedIn sent me a notification today in case I was interested in applying, so words getting out.
Ah, nice, okay. Glad to meet, meet our criteria. At least we fell a lot better. Ashley?
We have a limited number of one-day vehicle park passes that are available for any Wisconsin State Park. So if you have a library card and good standing, you can check one of those out. And then our food truck rally is this Sunday from eleven to three. The hours are shifted a little bit, and we have nine trucks coming to our parking lot, and the weather's going to be fantastic.
It is, it is. Jenny?
The only person I have today is that reminder that the alcohol licensing discussion is up for this Thursday, starting at five thirty. So that's Jason Lee is coming down from the Department of Revenue to ask, is there any questions that we have from business owners or individuals on licensing regulations? And so this is a joint meeting that is going to be with other municipalities. So we've invited, it's all from this area. So I'm excited to see how many people attend from the business owners and individuals, and also people that are hosting special events that might need some questions answered.
Kelsey? Did you go to a conference?
I did.
Did you learn some new things?
Yes, I attended the spring municipal treasures conference last Thursday and Friday. And yeah, there was some great topics and a few ideas I can bring back and hopefully implement. And then I'm slowly starting to think about the twenty twenty-four budget process, so stay tuned.
That's exciting. And Kelsey also sat in on a webinar from, or Zoom, or with the League of Wisconsin Municipalities and sent out a summary that's regarding the possible bill around shared revenue changes. So seems a little bit complicated right now, but we'll give you all an update. Mark E?
I just, a reminder again that the lead service program for the private side replacement goes until June thirtieth for construction. So encourage people to apply.
What about the submarine thing?
The tower inspection?
Yes.
That was done in March. They used a remote operated vehicle submarine to do an interior inspection of the water tower on Rogers Street.
I feel like those are like the cool things that we need to be celebrating. Like we could have a proclamation around like National Submarine Day or something every few years. Televising? Yeah, yeah, it could be a whole thing. A special meeting and everything, popcorn. Anything else for anyone?
I do want to mention the Milton Youth Coalition.
Yes, I, you do want to mention that, don't you?
So on Saturday, the Milton Youth Coalition hosted a pre, a pre-prom photo event over at Sharla's. We had about sixty to seventy youth, I think, attend. What? Okay, a hundred. A hundred youth attend. We had four different backdrops. We had a three sixty camera, and there's food, and I'm so excited to see all the photos. And I think Maggie received really great feedback from all the youth. So it was a really great event, and we're probably doing it again, again next year.
It was amazing and so much fun, and the kids were great and excited, and just they were fun to be around. And we got really great kids in Milton, so. So that was really a nice event for the Milton Youth Coalition. So keep though that in mind, and what our, our evening meeting for the Milton Youth Coalition is Monday, May?
Fifteenth at the chapel.
At the chapel at?
Five thirty.
Five thirty. So if you haven't attended a Milton Youth Coalition meeting, feel free to do that, and if more, if a lot of council members are going to attend, let Jenny know so she can post that there may be, you know, a quorum.
And a meal will be provided.
And a meal will be provided and stimulating conversation and exchange of knowledge. So everybody walks away with their belly and their brain full. All right. Alright, our next meeting date is May sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved, say it.
All those in favor? Anyone oppose? Anybody abstaining? We're adjourned. Thanks, everybody. I got a funeral to go to.